Let's rock and roll. We've got a great program today with Paul Cunningham, who's a member of the city of Tucson Council. He's a public school teacher, a longtime community leader with a lifetime of public service, and over a decade of professional leadership. He's a 1992 graduate of Rincon High School. He enlisted in the Army at the age of 18, where he trained as a combat medic. Paul worked as a juvenile probation officer for 10 years, has served as vice president of his union. In 2006, he founded a not-for-profit Team Tucson to help address the growing challenge of teen homelessness. Paul has a master's in social work. He was first appointed to the Tucson City Council in 2010. Under his leadership, every major park in his ward has seen significant improvements. Pools across the city, including the Fort Lowell Pool, have been reopened to the public, and more than $100 million in parks projects are being planned. Paul is running for reelection in the 2023 city elections. Let's give him a big welcome from the Democrats to Greater Tucson.
Hello, DGT.
Hey, Paul.
How's everybody doing? Um, one of the, hold on a second. I'm, I'm just finishing class. Believe it or not, I work as a school teacher. I teach PE at Gridley Middle School right here in Ward 2. And we, and actually, it just finishes fourth period. This is my lunch hour. My fourth period class is an excellent education class. It's the first time I've taught exceptional education since I've been a teacher, and it's actually been one of the coolest experiences of my life. So I wanted to kind of put that out there, but uh, the, the other pieces to the bio that I thought, I think would be really important to talk about is we've also paved our roads in Ward 2, and we do a lot of homeless outreach in Ward 2. We've also worked on a considerable number of things, including the mayor's climate change plan, the million trees, water conservation, and now we're shifting towards some new solar tech. One of the things that we brought forth out of my office this year is urging people to allow, or urging the Corporation Commission to relax the regulations they have and allow HOAs and neighborhood associations to purchase solar rooftop in bulk. And we think that's going to be a really neat initiative. We're trying to find a neighborhood to pilot that program. So what's up for the next four years? What are we going to do in Tucson? And how are we going to make Tucson where we need it to be? I think the biggest thing that, that it begins with is we really want to see a Tucson that allows us to grow smartly and responsibly. And the only way we can do that is we have to accept that some of the things, some of our conventional ways of thinking have changed a little bit. One of the things that I'd really like to see is some possible overlays in certain areas so that we do, we do look at more dense housing and more dense land use, but also flexible land use. We don't just need to lock in anything into just residential and just residential, commercial, or industrial. We need to have some flexibility in those. I think that'll help us in building smart density with proper setbacks and a little bit relaxed height requirements. We can see really good projects going in our corridors that I think will help us, and I think it's something that we'll work, we'll work toward. The other thing is, is we still have to work toward a community safety plan in which we're helping people who want to be helped. We're reaching out and building trust to people who need to be helped. And we are engaging with people who are not helping. And that's one of the biggest challenges we have right now. Right now, I can tell you that I go to probably two or three homeless camps a week. I probably interact with more, more than five unsheltered folks a week and try to get them placed, try to get them a place to go, try to get them off the street, and try to get them to work with, with, with the programs and the the systems that we've set up in order to, to help with this crisis. And it's not easy. There's no same story. There's no one size fits all. And this challenge is probably one of the bigger challenges I've had. I've got some experience dealing with it, doing, doing this work for 12 years prior to being on the city council. I was a juvenile probation officer, and I did have students and families that were unsheltered at that time. Uh, the other piece is, is that we worked on a nonprofit at that time for unsheltered families. And believe it or not, working here at a public school, we see pieces of it every day. So I think we've got our work cut out for us, but I think we're doing the work and I think we're doing the job. And I'm really happy with some of the things. One of the things we've done in Ward 2 is we've hired a homeless outreach coordinator, and that homeless outreach coordinator specifically works on outreach in the streets, meeting people where they are and talking to them. We have some things coming up in the next couple of months that'll be really interesting discussions as we move Tucson along. But I like to believe that I can stand by my record in Ward 2 and what I've done on the East Side. Over these past 12 years, we've seen the pools at both Fort Lowell, Jesse Owens Park, and Palaverdy Park have capital improvements. We built a splash pad at Palaverdy Park. That was the first one for any park in Tucson. We built a super splash pad at Udall Park. That was one of the first ones that we built in Tucson. We also built the Jesse Owens Park covered basketball court. We also rebuilt five different playgrounds and parks. We re-sprayed grass. We built new irrigation systems at Jesse Owens Park and Vista del Prado, but we put in a enhanced irrigation system with new sprinkler heads, and there's going to be a new strain of sod at Palaverdy Park. On the roadside, we've actually resurfaced 15 different neighborhoods since I've been in office, and we're working on our 16th. These are residential streets. We've done it creatively by using piggyback money from speed humps and speed, uh, speed, uh, traffic circles to slow down drivers. One of the things that we've had is after we lost the red light cameras, which I wasn't a big fan of quite frankly, but they served a purpose and, and um, we had a, we had a increase in fatalities and traffic issues. So I worked on the traffic, uh, the distracted driving hands reordnance, which we passed out of my office, and we worked on the drag racing ordinance out of my office. And the drag racing ordinance allows us to take someone's car if they're uh, ticketed for drag racing. So we didn't have people just drag racing the next day. And that was one of the challenges that I thought was important. Um, we've also, I also passed the free pools for all kids. I passed free buses for kids before we had the pandemic. We've actually had free buses for everyone and free pools for everyone since the pandemic. But prior to that, we'd be passed those programs at least for kids so people would, would be able to get where they needed to after three and get to go swimming in the summer for three, which I thought was really important for our, our young people. Um, even though we did that great thing at Jesse Owens Park, we, we had a big makeover. We didn't have any money. We wanted to show what a park could look like. We did this huge makeover for Jesse Owens Park, but I don't think that's enough. One of the things we did was we wrote a program just for Jesse Owens Park so it actually gets used. So every Wednesday, we have a middle school sports program, and that's the day that middle schools get out early. And we think that's been a great success in Tucson. We've also touched every single artillery road in Ward 2 since I've been in office. We're actually on the second round, including uh, west, the western part of Ward 2, which is Willmott to Pantano. We're going to, we're going to start that process this year. We also notably have the Lax Star TA project in Ward 2 will be East 22nd. And uh, we're having some challenges with that project and what we actually want the scope to be as opposed to what people, uh, what, what the neighbors and what the stakeholders want the scope to be as opposed to what uh, some of the traffic designers want to have the scope to be. So we, we, we do all those things in Ward 2, and we try to do them with efficiency and with care. Lastly, we are moving offices. Um, one of the things that we've had in Ward 2 is we have the Tucson Ward 2 office. Sometimes people, some people call it East Side City Hall, and we have done a land swap with Desert Christian High School, and we will move to the empty center at Pantano and Broadway. And what's good about that is, one, when I first took office during the, during the recession, that building, those three buildings had been vacant for like nine years. And they, we worked as hard as we could to try to get them rented. They were rented for a short time, but we really never got that property properly activated, and now it's going to be properly activated. It's going to be able to host some county service offices, Ward 2, and possibly some, uh, some, uh, some city functions as well, so people don't have to drive all the way across town. And that's one of the things we want to be able to have. We want to have short trip proximity for all your services. And right now, as you well know, going downtown to go to court, repay your water bill, or for whatever reason, even recycling, we just didn't have the proper footprint where we are now, and now we will. But there's a double bonus. The Desert Christian High School is going to build a track stadium, but they're going to open that walking track to the public in the evenings so they can walk around, and you'll have basically an extra park feature. So we're working on that right now as well. We also helped with the purchase of electric buses and you know, landscaping, just all kinds of different programs that we run through Ward 2. Uh, but that's kind of my little spiel. I'm up for reelection. I'm looking forward to serving the constituents of Ward 2 for another four years. And you know, it, it's been the, the honor of a lifetime to be able to do this. So I'm happy to take any questions now. And uh, you can find out more about my candidacy, my campaign at CunninghamForCouncil.com. CunninghamForCouncil.com. I think Jesse's going to put that in the chat, and I'd love to, I'd love to hear more of you and less of me.
Let's go ahead. We have Craig Markin. Craig, please unmute and ask Paul your question.
Yes, hello. Uh, what can the city do to encourage solar panels above parking lots? Whether it's in a park or at a strip mall, and is it possible to have outlets for plugging in electric vehicles associated with it?
So that's a great question. We've already actually passed a couple ordinances that enhances that requirement and encourages it. We also have some incentives in CREEB credits that allow businesses to apply both through federal and state programming. We have a portion of that that goes into it. It doesn't, we, we haven't put a lot of hard cash into that, um, because we think the incentive, we the incentives are already there, but what we do is help facilitate businesses and companies to go with solar, so solar powered parking lots. They're a big plus to the community. Uh, our partner is Tucson Electric Power in this, and they, you know, they're, they're like any other private utility that's on a franchise agreement. They're going to do what's still best for their shareholders. So that's, it's something that I've come to very reluctantly accept, but uh, we think we're working better with them to encourage them to help us facilitate these things. They are a little bit more open at the parking lots. They, they're not as big a fans as rooftop solar as I'd like them to be because they feel that it becomes an engineering and regular power regulation, like actual power regulation. Uh, uh, conundrum when they have too many solar panels pumping at once, and they have to build more transformers and switches. So that's one of the things that, that uh, that, that we, that we run into. But yes, we, uh, we do, we do facilitate that and we do help fund it.
Okay, uh, we have a question from Lily in Fox. Lily, and go ahead and unmute and ask your question.
Okay. I hate to bring this up because you've done such amazing things, you know, really great things. But I live in an apartment complex with 260 apartments and two, count them, two recycling bins bins that are always full and overflowing of a friend who lives in a condo complex, and we're all in your ward where there's no recycling bin at all. And we used to take our stuff to the Ward 2 City Hall because you had a bunch of recycling bins there. They're gone now. So where do we take our recycling?
Our recycling will reopen as soon as we move to the Pantano and Broadway facility. Um, we had to take that recycling bin down because we had too many people not recycling there. We had a lot of people doing some wildcat dumping. We couldn't properly fence it off, and we couldn't properly uh, have someone monitor uh, the, the, the area. In the new facility, when we move over, we're going to be able to have a, an attendant that's there to make sure everybody is not just dumping garbage there, but actually bringing the proper recycling and putting them in the proper bins. I think it'll be a much more efficient recycling center. So yes, we did have a shutdown. It's only going to end up being about five months, but I stand by that decision because we had people coming in the middle of the night, and there was a housing complex uh, less than about 18 to 20 feet away, and it had become a really, really big issue. So we said, all right, we're going to temporarily shut down our recycling operation until we make the move and have a better, more robust, and more responsible recycling operation. So yes, there is going to be a five-month lull, but I think it's a, a worth a decision, and that should be coming online hopefully by the beginning of the summer.
The other thing I would suggest, I think of big apartment complexes and condo complexes should be required to have a reasonable number of recycling bins. You know?
Well, I think, I think that would be a tremendous idea. I think we can, so some of them use private uh, haulers, so they don't, they, they go to Republic, and they go to Earl's, they go to whoever. Um, so we can probably mandate that they have partial recycling. I think they have to. Uh, but I don't know if we're giving them enough cubic tonnage or cubic footage requirements for their garbage. So we could probably look at that and see if we need to adjust the ordinance so that uh, their recycling is, is meeting the needs of all the people in their complex.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Steve Earle has, Early has a question for you.
Hi, Paul, and thank you for being here. My question is, is what is going on with the city? Some parts of it look like a war zone, and the rest of it look like Bel Air. And it doesn't make any sense if it's all one city. Why the South Side and Empire look like war zones, and where you live and where I'm moving to look really nice. Just doesn't make much sense to me.
Well, I don't think that. I mean, every, every area's got places, some places hire it better, hide it better. I mean, everybody tries to run a tight ship and, and work on the roads. I can tell you that this weekend, uh, I try to do, I do what's called a, a day of service every Friday. Um, so like, one Friday, we'll clean up the watch. The next Friday, my team will go out and fill potholes at a park. The next Friday, we'll go, that's Friday, we went to Casa Maria and helped out at Casa Maria for the day. Um, this week, I've been shopping cart wrangling. I think I wrangled 27 shopping carts over the weekend. So that was, I just did that myself, like side of the road. And, and so we try to have that day of service. We try to be really responsive, but I know that all the other councils do it. And again, you're always playing catch-up. There's always something to do. There's always something to get done. And a lot of times, you'll put in the work order, and as of right now, unfortunately, like all other cities in the country, in every department, we are hiring. The city is open for employees right now. We are so understacked in every department, and we can't find that, that option to get people to cut, to, to want to come in and, and work for us. And that's because I think there's a new way. I think we're seeing a new way of how people want to work. People want flexible scheduling. It used to be, you know, it's not like when we were kings, everybody. Everybody was looking for the, the, the steady salary and the good pension and the good healthcare plan. Well, now that's a little bit different. I think the world's changed a little bit, and I think people are looking for some flexibility and be able to take time off once in a while. And they want to be able to kind of write their own schedule to some degree and make some, some of their own hours, and I get that. So I totally respect that, and we have to be able to adapt to that modern uh, labor and that modern worker and see how we can, we can do that. I think we're making some progress, but we'll continue to find new ways to be a welcoming employer to the, to the new and modern worker.
Okay, Mike Bryan, what do you have for us?
Uh, Leola had a question in the chat. Uh, she wanted to know, well, I'll just read her question. There are many people running red light, red traffic lights and stop signs. Red light running has increased exponentially since the traffic cameras were voted out. I understand that the city council did not gain financially from the camera catches and the traffic lights were erratic too. Can we get the traffic cameras back? And have the, has the city made the, the money from the fines? And have the city money from the fines? Yeah.
So the, the, the traffic cameras were a really mixed bag. Some people loved them, some people hated them. They did make money at first. They broke about even, did, did okay later. Um, there were a couple of problems with it. Number one was we had a fine schedule of like $350, and we have some people that are really trying to manage their household, manage their employment, and it was so punitive. So that was one of the pieces of it. And a lot of that is because the state has mandated all these surcharges on whatever fine. So if your fine is a dollar, there's still another like $61 in surcharges. What we did on parking was we took those surcharges off the parking, and we made parking kind of almost like an honor system. And, and we've been very successful. We also put in the solar panel, um, credit card-enabled parking meters that obviously improved that. But as far as the red light cameras go, one thing that was really important when we selected a new chief was to have somebody who had a background with motors. And sure enough, um, that's where Chief Kazmar started. And so that's why I made the motion to make him chief, because he's really passionate about uh, traffic. And we brought back, we reinstated the motoring unit, which had not existed for about four years. So I think we're, we're trying to tamp down on the problematic traffic. I know that uh, one of the other things we're looking at is we're looking at a road diet on Fifth Street. Uh, we're also looking at, um, I think long-term, the other piece we have is we need to have something from that crosstown traffic, that traffic that's going from one end of Tucson to the under of Tucson, be able to go from one end to the other. I think we can do that working with the state on Gulf Links and the, on McLavio Barasa Parkway. I think that piece can uh, give us really what we need as far as uh, just a better facilitation. So we're not, so the people who are in midtown and going through midtown have a better option, either A, using transit, or B, uh, the traffic's thinning out enough because it's all commuter traffic to specific spots. And that's, that's the city we want. That's what everybody wants. And so we, I think we can do that, but we're really going to have to work with our federal partners and state partners on the McLavio Barasa piece. This is the issue. Think, think about, I'm, I'm sure some of you have had to hold your nose and drive to Phoenix. Raise your kind of hands and do a little one of these, and you had to drive to Phoenix.
Yeah.
And you go there and you go, Jew is McIllicurs. How did they get this much concrete and freeways built? And it's because they have a whole bunch of state routes, and they don't turn any of that money down. We have never really used any of that money. We just don't get it. And so we could, we can use it out on the Oracle. We can use it on Olmwood Galifah Way, and we can use it at McLavio Barasa. And I think that would give us an opportunity, McLavio Barasa specifically, where if you could get safe from like Willmott to downtown with no stoplights, then I think it would divert some of that traffic off of 22nd and, and Broadway, and you wouldn't have all that shift, and we may have a less congested traffic, which I think is safer traffic. So that's kind of how it would work. But again, I, I'm not the ultimate traffic engineer. I'm just trying to explain it the way that I understand it. And I think it, I think it makes sense to me, but we'll have to see whether or not uh, our partners are willing to, to help us with that, and if the RTA, uh, and I quite frankly, don't want to use RTA resources for that. I want to use the RTA resources for pavement preservation and going back to being able to take care of what we've already built and expanded.
Yeah, maybe we can get Elon Musk out here to bore us a tunnel from the east side to the west side.
Oh, Jew is McIllicurs. I don't know if I want to be on this guy here.
I do have a question of my own for you, Paul. Uh, I would like to know what your top prior, what, what you think the top priorities are for your east side ward in particular, as opposed to the rest of Tucson as a whole. What are the most important projects and, uh, and developments you think are facing your ward specifically?
Well, one thing about Ward 2 is we have a significant elderly population, and so we need to continue to have the outreach for the elderly that we've always had. So that's always a big priority. The other priority I've had is the same priority that we've been delivering on for the past decade, which is giving us that quality of life of nice parks, quality roads, and uh, safety response. And then those are things that, those are the core services of our charter, and they're, they're boring. It's the nuts and bolts stuff. It's, it's nothing that fancy. I think the other piece is, is long-term planning, and this is a big piece to this because it's counterintuitive to some of the other stuff we're doing in other wards. For instance, I talked about density in midtown and some of our corridors, which we need to do. But Ward 2 abutes to a sub-suburban. It's not rural and it's not suburban. It's sub-suburban, like ranch area. And I actually think there's some value to that. The question is, is how do we facilitate it properly? We also have one of the largest in urban equine clusters, equine horse ranches in a city in the country. And so there's this like, so we have this weird about 180 to 300 acre, acre track in the middle of Ward 2, which is all ranches. And we've really got to figure out whether or not there's value to that and how to protect it. I think we should. So we've got to figure out that growth. And so long-term, I think we're going to end up having a couple small density projects built, like the Meridash project and stuff like that. So that we're housing, we're addressing some housing concerns as adding to housing stock and doing the right thing. But we're also allowing that transition into the sub-suburban area. But I think that's a true thing about the way of life out on the east side.
Thanks, Paul.
Great. And then we have a question from Robert Bolcheck.
Hey there.
Hey, Robert.
So I believe it was 2017, city, uh, city council passed the mayor's climate agreement, which was committing Tucson to meeting the Paris Climate Goals. And that was all very nice, but as I understand it, no, well, not enough actual projects and funding occurred to meet those goals. And while the goal said that we, Tucson's emissions would go down, actually, they went up. So just recently, the city council has passed a climate action plan. And so can you talk a little bit about how the city is going to actually fund projects and/or ordinances that would actually reduce emissions in Tucson rather than just setting goals and hoping it happens?
Well, the, the biggest pieces to it are part of how we're going to work with TEP to reduce what they're using. We want them to go to 100% renewal by, I think, 2050, Robert. We also want to phase in all-electric buses, um, electric garbage trucks if we can. We want to build a transit system that people will use, so there's less cars that will, will be those emissions. But if we continue to add a population grow, some of those emission pieces aren't going to change. I'll also say this, in defense of the mayor's thing, it usually takes a year or two to get these things rolling. And then what happened in 2020, we got hit with COVID. And like, you just, every, all that focus changed for the next 16 to 18 months, from say, March 2020 until the end of 2021, um, all we worked on, it felt like, was figuring out public health. And so when those priorities shift, you're only, you, you can only do so much. So while we weren't as laser-focused on the, well, while we weren't as laser-focused as, as, as we could have been on the traffic, on the climate plan at that time, I, it's like saying, well, I'm kind of guilty with an explanation, man. And we're in the middle of this global health crisis. So I, I, I think we're, we're on the right track, and I think I support the mayor and how aggressive she's been on the climate change plan. But again, I think that some of these pieces, especially like the rooftop solar and enhancing our crabs, but remember, we've put almost every city building has, is, is going solar on it. Slowly but sure, we're, we're, we're continuing to do that. And it's really about, uh, sometimes the stuff outside of this is what is working against us. So it, in other words, there are legitimately legislators and in some case uh, federal operators who are not helping us facilitate more solar, and they become impediments, including the, including the Corporation Commission. So I'd say that's kind of where our pieces are, but I know that we're committed, and I feel that we've been really aggressive in trying to pursue that no emission goal by 2050.
Yeah, I agree. The city has done a good job with solar on city buildings.
Thank you.
Okay. Lee Oller has a question for you, Paul.
I just wanted to continue what I was thinking about this traffic of situation. I'm not sure, I, I don't agree with you about running expressways across town. I think maybe that ought to be a good job for a trolley, or that should be a good job for buses, express buses, and get those cars off the road. If you can load so many people in a bus and then um, avoid individual And then, um, avoid individual vehicles. That would be a blessing to everybody, I, I think. Um, the other thing is that I was kind of, when I wrote that question and Mike read it. Um, I probably left out a couple of words, but I would, um. I'm concerned about residential areas. Uh, basically where I live, but we have a lot of little stop signs. People are running those. And there's a stop sign at every block going one way or the other. And these people are running there. They're just running them cold. They're not even slowing down. And I'd love to see some of those bicycle cops out in, uh, at the area here. This would be Ward three. Three, um, Kevin Dowd Ward. We used to have those way back when, and I don't know where they went. Uh, money probably, but I, that's, that's where I was going with that because. I, I could get wiped out here if I don't stop at every single corner and wait for whoever is around. Um, to see if they're gonna stop or not. And, um. Well, that's, those are the couple of the things that I was thinking of. And, uh. I understood. Now, this is all, you know, how hearsay. But that this company that was running the red light camera setup. Was really making a lot of money off it and the camera, uh, the lights, the traffic lights were erratic. So you never knew if you were gonna get through on a yellow or if you should slam on your brakes. And the, the traffic light company. As I said, this is rumor, hearsay. Uh, was making a lot of money off these lights, off the citizens of Tucson. But this, this, uh, city itself wasn't making any or very little. So that's where I was going with that. And I don't know if that was, uh, you've been in office quite a while. So maybe that. You heard that, but I mean, you have other jobs too. So that's where I was going. And I don't know what anybody can do about that. And I know Cromco ran that campaign too. And he's very good at running campaigns like that. Stop the red lights, traffic cameras. So. That's, that's where I was coming from. And, uh. You don't have to say anything now if you don't want to. I don't care.
No, I can, I, I can do a couple of things. One is, is that. So usually neighborhoods have to spend five hundred dollars for speed humps. In Ward two, we actually cover that. And we've also added the number of speed humps where that neighbors can put in. We, we did that in my office. I know that we're the only office who's done that so far. The other thing I'll tell you is that American Traffic Solutions was making money and we weren't, which was. That, but that was neither here nor there. The biggest issue we had was the geometric form of some of the intersections and where they can pick interceptions where the line of elongation was different. Than the crosswalk line. And so we had multiple, multiple people who'd learned their whole lives that they were good if they were in the intersection of the crosswalk line. And really there's a line from the curb that wasn't. And so there's this, I mean. If you were turning left, eastbound on twenty second, I'm, I mean, on Will, uh, if you were eastbound twenty second, turning left onto Willnot going north. There was like an eighty foot gap between the. Between the crosswalk and the line of elongation. And I can't tell you how many calls we got. With people who were just so upset. They felt completely belittled and hurt. Finally, on the expressway, I know that no one wants a crosstown freeway and, and I get. But I agree with you about the trolley. That's kind of what I was trying to say. But we have to have the transit side and we have to have the commuter side. And the issue is, is that we just have too many cars over there. The idea is to not have as many cars on the corridors. I just think that it doesn't make any sense when all, we. Already golf links and Baraza are already across town. We might as well just make it so more people would use it. That's kind of where I'm at with that. It's, it's, in other words, it's an under a lot utilized road that's already been built. So we might as well enhance it so people will use it.
Right. And I drive up and down Grant Road a lot and we, it's a mess. There are people running lights.
We'd love to see, we'd love to see that, 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 that finished product and the, 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 the part. But that's where we have a lot of tracks on both sides of the road that are now vacant lots. Where kind of the, the, the opportunity to be creative is, is the sky's the limit.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Lillian Fox has a question. Unmute Lillian.
I've got several things I could ask about. One of them is, at the very beginning, you mentioned you want to do a pilot project with a condo. Letting them buy solar and bulk. And I think you mentioned something about recharging. And I have a friend who lives in another condo project where they wanted to do salt, so they wanted to do car. Uh, charging and it just became too complicated. So how's this pilot project gonna work? Cause they might be going back on that.
So I, what I want to do is set up an M I D, what's called a municipal improvement district for a neighborhood or an H O A. That M I D would be a property tax assessment or an H O A monthly additional assessment. We'd amortize the cost in building every single person. We'd amortize the cost for every single person in the H O A or neighborhood association. To put solar on their rooftop. It would go through a master meter and the credits would get paid to the H O A or the N A. And then they dispersed those rebates to the. Uh, the, the residents. That's the idea. Now, you know. Easier said than done, right? But I, it would be really cool. Because you're saving on mobilization costs, you're saving on permitting, you're saving on the number of meters you've got to build, you're saving on. I mean, there's so many opportune savings and it would absolutely pencil out. And at the same time, you all of a sudden have. Uh, you're, you're basically putting in twenty five to a hundred new, you know, energy neutral homes next to each other. While you brought up re, recharge. Oh, that is that, does that answer that question?
That partially answers it, but go ahead and continue with the recharge because they were looking at both.
Okay, so you're talking about recharge for water or you're talking about recharge for, um.
No, charging.
Like cars, charging cars. Yeah. So in that same, in that same avenue. A complex or an H O A could build, uh, charging stations. Uh, where they're set up. And, and, and we've already kind of talked about that on how that can be facilitated. Believe it or not, I sat down with Robert right before we passed it and talked about the two twenties and the one tens. And what we needed at each thing to have it so that, um. You could really take any parking lot that has lights. And, and put outlets in that would, would allow cars to charge. So we talked about that as well. Finally, while you brought, because you said the word recharge, I realized I didn't really talk about water policy while I've been here. And if I don't talk about water policy. At D G T, then I have failed as a city councilman. So right now, uh, when we took, when we took office in that. Uh, well, actually, if we go back before fifteen years before I was even interested in taking office in nineteen ninety seven. We only had in some estimations fifty to twenty five years of water left. And we have gone through painstaking efforts to rebuild the water table underneath, to bring in cap water. And use it for recharge. We actually accidentally invented that technology. Where we were able to take permeation that takes sometimes twenty to thirty years and do it in sixteen months in certain parts of Tucson. The other, so our caps are our western well field is at capacity, which means we have plenty of water. The eastern well field in Takeverdy area hasn't been as successful. But we've worked really hard in Ward two to work with different stakeholders to turn off wells. And take and buy their golden water rights. And those are golden water rights are water letters that you have. Where you're entitled to so many acre feet of groundwater a year. And we've decided that we're gonna try to buy those up and shut down those wells. And I'd rather bring fresh water out there from Capsar where a well, well field is full. And allow that water table in those areas to, to, to recharge and replenish itself. One of the cool things we've done on that is we've taken some programs where we've actually taken purple water, which is what reclaimed effluent. And put it back into the Santa Cruz River. That was our first project with it. It's created a neat little water feature, but on top of that, believe it or not, some seventy five to eighty percent of that wire is permeating. It's creating alluvial fans. It's building the vegetation in that desert. I mean, it is just a gorgeous thing. I'd like to see that happen at Takeverdy Creek this year. We have, we, I think tomorrow. Lord willing, we'll hit the first a hundred day flow. Uh, of Takeverdy Creek after the confluence at Sabino Creek in like probably fifty years. And we're still trying to research when the last time it happened. I wish I could take credit for that because we turned all those wells off, but that's not the case. We just happen to have three really good snowstorms this year. But the idea that we have those healthy creeks and washes in Tucson. Is what makes Tucson unique and special. And so I'll still work on that all, uh, for the rest of my career. Because it's something I believe in.
I still have a question about the solar panels. You've got a lot of condo complexes in Ward two and also some really huge apartment complexes. And the apartment complex owners have zero motivation to go solar because they're not paying for the electricity. So what could you maybe do to motivate them? To go solar, the same way you're doing with condo complexes. Cause if you don't take care of the apartment complexes. You know, you've gotten like half the problem.
You, you know, it's a tough one because some of the complexes who have, so there's some complexes where you pay. You pay your electric bill, but they handle the, the heating and cooling and they tack it out of the rent. There's some complexes who include utilities in the rent. And they are the utility company and use solar. And there's some complexes who, uh, do not. And pretty much we've been at the mercy of the free market over the years as, uh, that solar piece was a. Wasn't it, was an enhancement that they thought could draw tenants. That's changed a little bit. But we, I mean, I would say that some of the, uh, complexes are using solar. But a lot, in a lot of cases, when they're vertical and denser, they even, even with the parking and the shade area. They don't, they're, the solar, the photovoltaics just aren't generating enough power for them to, to want to do it. So that's the other piece. We probably have to come up with some program where. You'd be, they'd be able that they'd have, we'd have to force the utility to set a lower rate for them. And we're just not gonna be able to do, I mean, we can try to do that. I just don't know how we're gonna get landlords and property owners to agree with that.
Okay, Mike, do you have some questions still?
Uh, there's none in the chat at this time, but I, I do have a question of my own. I'd like you to address. That's, uh, housing affordability. Uh, you know, we have a big crisis here in Arizona. We're, I don't know, a quarter million or, or so units short of what demand actually requires. And of course rents are going up. Um, what is it that we can do as a city to, to help address that affordability and, and housing availability crisis?
Well, the first thing we can do is, uh, go to the legislature and pre, please try to help them with, um. Please try to encourage them to not preempt all the rent control abatement programs that. People have come up with, but that's neither here nor there. More importantly, uh, we really need to have. Uh, well, we have, we've put in over. I don't know, we've added another five hundred units of public housing in the last year and a half. And we continue to add it. We've also, uh, repaired some of the units that we had out. Uh, we, we've now gone from a, a subsidized housing program of like twelve thousand to fifteen thousand. And we think it's started to kind of level out. Some of the rents have started to level out in this past six months. But that's one of the big pieces to the housing front. We're still trying to engage people one at a time and still trying to get them that housing first model. Because the bottom line is, is that we get, we're getting it from all sides. We'll let them be. Well, if we let them be. And we have a nice clean camp. At some point, a bad actor can move into that camp and make it a big problem. Then we have the people who want to lock them up. Well, I'm going, well, what, what good does that do? Uh, now basically what you've done is we've spent a thousand dollars. Uh, because somebody has a jaywalking warrant and had them spend the night in jail and released them and gave them another fifteen hundred dollars in fines they gotta pay. That doesn't solve anything either. So that's why I like our housing first model. And we're really just trying to engage people one at a time. It just doesn't go that fast because there's so many folks in crisis right now. So the pieces are, as we built and built, we actually can place people a lot faster now. We have Wildcat in, Nightson's coming online. We have Anklam, we have the Notel. So we have all these different temporary transition units. And for the folks that are temporary in transition. It's a lot, it's becoming a lot easier to place them right now. And I'm, I'm really happy with that progress. And I think it's kind of leveled it out, but man, we still have a backlog and a long way to go. So we're gonna keep working at it every day. And you know, every, every single person deserves, deserves our attention. If they're ready, they're ready. And then some people, it's no health, some people, it's bad luck, some people are, it's just, they need that moment of clarity. And we have to be there when those moments come and we have to be ready.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question in the chat. Uh, Francisca Partes, uh, asks. Could the upcoming twenty second street bridge negatively impact the Barasa Aviation Parkway during the estimated three year building timeframe? And afterward?
I think it will, I don't think it will neg, it, the, the negative time will be short. So in other words, they'll have to shut. The Barasa Parkway down, but it'll be like for less than a few weeks. And then it'll run again and then they'll have to shut it down for another couple of weeks and then it'll run again. I think that's how that bridge will be built. I don't think it'll be a situation where it shuts down, uh, for more than that. But that's my experience with these projects. Again, I've never actually supervised a bridge project. But I do know that, uh, we try to make it as least invasive as possible and, and we don't want to disrupt the works. It would be a shame to do that for too long considering we just opened up downtown links, which I think was a tremendous project.
Andrea Kennedy, Kennedy has a question for you.
Hey Andrea.
Hmm, hey, hey Paul. It's good to see you, um. Personally, I don't care if, oh, I'll cut off the top of my head here. I don't care if people who are homeless that I see never do a productive thing in their life. I don't think anyone should sleep under a bridge. Is there anything that I can? When I see them, is there like a card I can give them or a place to call? Something I can tell them? And they may not, because these guys are traumatized and mentally ill and. Oh my God, it just, it just rings my heart out to say, is there something that I can really say here, try this? So they know that somebody sees them and cares.
So this is, so I'm gonna answer this. The, 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 the councilman way, then I'm gonna answer it the personal way. All right. The councilman way is yes. And if you want some cards to hand out, we will get to them. We have one that our street outreach people use. But. Believe it or not, quite a few of them have cell phones. And. In my experience over this past couple of years, well, in, in, at least in the last eight or nine months. Um, gaining trust is the biggest thing, like will they remember you? And one of the things I've done is I've actually showed up with a cup of coffee. And then like here, man. What's your name? Because that's like the first thing, like you actually care what their name is. Like they, they have people throw money at them. They have people hand them money and yell at them. They have people tell them they'll take them to shelter, then it doesn't work out. They've been taken to shelter and been victimized in shelter. They've been taken to shelter and been kicked out of shelter. On something that they don't believe was their fault, whether it was or not is irrelevant. They don't believe it was. They have been through all these things. And so when you walk up there and go, hey. Gee whiz, I'm, I'm a city councilman. I'm gonna get you a bed space. They're like, man, you can't do anything for me. They wave you off. And they, like they should. So I've learned, I just kind of show up with a cup of coffee and they, hey, man, I'm here. This is my number. Here's some info and I text it to them. And you'd be surprised. I see the dude again. And they're like, yo, you're that guy texting me. Aren't you like a councilor? I'm like, hey, man, I'm just here to help. When you're ready, let me know. And all of a sudden, like the third touch, I call it a touch, the third time I see him. They're like, hey, man, what's that number you, you were gonna give me? And so it, it's really building that. And it, it, you gotta do it one at a time. So from a personal conveyance, that's what I'll tell you. But from a, from a, from a, here's a card, I got those. I, we got those. Everybody's got those, but it's really this, there's such a human side to it. And man, I mean, for those of you who know me long enough, you know that, that, that I understand what it's, what. I, I try to be very empathetic about what it. What it is to be down and out. And, and, and you know, I mean. Let's be honest, man, I've never had it hard. You guys all know, folks, I mean, it's, it's, it, it isn't like that. I always had somebody supporting me. But the bottom line is, is that if I can't. Try to be there for that person like, like they were for me, then I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be your council. So that's kind of where I come from on that. And that's, I know that's a little. Cornball or whatever, but it's true, like actual. That's what, man, when connecting, connecting with people as human beings, man, that's what inspires people, man. That's what it's all about. And so we got, that's what we want to be. And, and, uh, I know it. It sounds a little preachy and out there, but I'm, I'm sorry. And especially this last year, I really believe that.
We're with you, Paul. That's a great response. Uh, Mike Bryant, did you have a question?
I see we got about five minutes left and, uh, I was just curious if you could, uh, give us a little discourse on municipal broadband, uh. Uh, what's holding it up? Why can't we do it? Can't we reduce our costs by doing something like that? Because I know personally, I spend over a thousand dollars a year on broadband connectivity and I am absolutely sure it doesn't cost them that much. That's almost pure profit. Uh, so what's the deal with municipal?
I I I love it. So we we put in municipal broadband. Network. It doesn't stretch the way we want it to. And what we found out was the cost to build that network that strong and deliver the same bandwidth to every home that say Cox or Century Link does. We could basically it it's less expensive to just rent it from them and get them to lower their prices. So that's kind of what, you know, kind of what that work is. And so we're trying to find that medium where where kind of it's almost like to dip your toe in. Or we're trying to say, hey, we'll 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 if you guys aren't going to help us have a low income program and a lower cost program or just uh lower lower cost for everyone, then we'll 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 start our own network. And they go, oh, no, don't start your own network. We can give it to all these people for nineteen ninety five a month. And we're like, well, that's way better than, you know, sixty or seventy or eighty that you that you're talking. But that's kind of a big piece to it. I ultimately think that having municipal broadband, but it like at a three G level is actually a really good idea. Um, I think that trying to build that capacity will run in five G municipal style and at five hundred and thirty thousand users, which isn't it's a little high. I mean, it was a little low. I mean, it it won't be five thirty. It'd be about four hundred thousand users at a time. That type of bandwidth, the the actual cost to build a network that vast is just incredible, man. So that's what's kind of keeping us up and and we just have too many, even with the the budget surpluses and the extra one time money. Even with all that, it's still like that much out of reach. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, Paul. Well, hey, thanks so much for such an informative and passionate presentation. And let's give Paul a real D G T. Welcome for being here today. There we go. Some hands are working. Yeah, some hands are working. Paul, did you? Do you have your contact information in the chat room by chance?
Uh, I think Chesney is going to post it on how to get ahold of me. My cell phone number is five two zero nine oh five five four three zero two. I've been giving it out for years and quite frankly, like at least fourteen people on it. Fourteen people on here have it. So it's it's great to see everybody. I think Lillian Fox's hand is up again.
Okay.
I this is probably an impossible question. Uh, apartment prices are being escalated at an incredible rate. A friend of mine just had her rent. She has a one bedroom, one bath apartment. And it's now almost a thousand dollars. Her rent increase was a hundred and thirty dollars a month. And exactly a year ago, a two bedroom apartment in that same complex was about nine hundred dollars. And the I have a friend who lives in a condo complex and she tells me most are a large percentage of the condos are owned by private outfits. You're renting them out. That they're not individual homes. Is there anything that can be done about keeping home?
Yeah, yeah. So I started working on this a while ago. And one of the things that I think would be there's two pieces to the condo piece. There's two pieces to it. Number one is is that I'd like us the the whole amateur landlord thing doesn't work. It creates predatory landlord, takes people. So I think that one of the things that H O A should be doing is the property manager firm doing the rental to be the one that does the property management of the of the of the H O A and they get that commission and can they can use their commissions to lower some of those H O A costs, which can lower rents. Uh, it's really interesting is you can go to a co op model in which owner operators have to live in a building. Um, and that that, believe it or not, is a it's the is an idea that I got from my uncle who lived in a co op. And a lot of you guys know my uncle, or maybe some of you didn't. He wasn't around as much in his later years. Um, he had he had some struggles or dislike, but he was a good person. And he uh he started, he believe it or not, he started pretrial services a long time ago. And my uncle, um, we got him a condo in an area where he couldn't, he had to live there. The owner on the deed had to live in it. And by having that requirement, it really uh negated and limited third party kind of swindlers like just there to own and rent and and do things that that were predatory. So I I think there's some other things out there to do, uh, but we have to encourage it first and then maybe incentivize it before we make it law. And then that's kind of my playbook over the years has been to say, let's encourage and then let's incentivize. And then if we have to, we'll we'll try to make mandate it. But usually, in my in my experience, people do not like being told what to do. So we 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 try to finesse it first. So that that's my answer. And other than that, I just want to thank everybody for having me. Um, it's great to be back at D G T. I freaking love you guys. Uh, and I love our Democratic Party and it's just such a special uh, a special thing to be a part of. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for having me today and uh I wish everybody the best and and hoped hope we can do something in person.
And the one o'clock hour has run, so uh let have a great rest of the day and we'll see you.